Domain by the Macon Bibb County Commission to acquire a temporary and/or permanent easement on certain parcels of land over on Hazel Street in connection with the construction of the new bridge over the railroad tracks. Those properties are 548 Hazel Street, 525 Hazel Street, and 539 Hazel Street. Is anybody here that wishes to be heard on that issue? The exercise of eminent domain to acquire a permanent and/or partial easement for the bridge construction on those parcels on Hazel Street? Anybody here to do that, wants to talk to us about the public here? What time is it, Mr. Attorney?
Six oh one.
Okay. Do we need to give till six oh two?
I think we're okay, six oh one.
Six oh one and nobody here, nobody here that wishes to be heard on that issue? Going once? Going twice? Well, I did, this was the pub, the public, the, right, the public hearing is over the exercise of eminent domain, which means taking the property with or without permission of the owner of certain parcels of land on Hazel Street to facilitate the construction of the new bridge over the railroad track. As to 548 Hazel Street, it is to acquire four hundred and sixty-nine square feet, more or less, and a temporary easement. So at the end of the construction project, it would go back to being part of the lot. As to 525 Hazel Street, there is a hundred and thirty-six square feet that is a permanent easement that would be acquired. And as to 539 Hazel Street, there's six hundred and nine square feet of temporary easement and a thousand and thirty square feet of a permanent easement on 539 Hazel Street that is necessary for the completion of the construction of the bridge. Anybody here that wants to be heard on that? Hearing none, then let me go ahead and call the public hearing to a close and then call to order the regular meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission. And we'll begin tonight, as we typically do, with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And I understand that we've got Shania Henderson and Marissa Henderson that are here, good, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you two would come over to the podium and stand behind Pastor Cavanaugh while he gives us the invocation, and when he says amen, he'll move out of your way, and then you can step up and just lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and just start off with our Pledge of Allegiance and we'll all join in, okay? So will y'all come over? Pastor Cavanaugh, thank you very much for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Every head bound, every heart humbled, our Father who art in heaven, we honor you and bless you for this day, knowing that you are Creator of heaven and earth. We thank you for the gathering of this body of community investors. We pray that your kingdom will come and your will will be done on this day, as we gather all the more in unity. We pray that our goal will be to express your love that you have for all humanity. So we thank you for your grace and favor that you have bestowed upon our great country, our great state, but more in particularly, our great city. We pray, O God, that your favor will rest and it will reign upon every heart that resides here in Macon, Middle Georgia. We thank you for the like-mindedness of all of our leaders and we pray now that they will gather all the more in unity and you will give us strategic, innovative ideas on how we can empower our community at large. We thank you now for your love shown, even through the giving of your Son. We pray now on this day, and every heart said, amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. Pastor Cavanaugh, thank you so much. Pastor Cavanaugh is the, past twelve years, my goodness gracious, how time flies, when you're having the fun, pastor and visionary of the New Hope Baptist Church in Macon out on Burton Avenue. The church also known as City of Hope and a church without walls and doing work of the Lord and outside the walls of the church, which vision is to build community of faith that transcends all socioeconomic boundaries while extending God's love to the least, the last, and the lost. Pastor Cavanaugh, thank you for what you're doing, that New Hope, and thank you for what you're doing for the Macon Bibb County community. We appreciate you being here tonight. Our Pledge of Allegiance were led by two of our Girl Scouts, Shania Henderson. Shania, would you please stand? And I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, is it Shania? Good. Shania Henderson lives in Macon with her family, attends Howard Middle School. She's twelve years old in the sixth grade, favorite subject is science, and she enjoys visual and performing arts and has recently joined the sixth grade beginner orchestra where she plays the cello. Shania has been an active member of the Girl Scouts for five years and has earned the Bronze Award. She occasionally volunteers and helps her community while serving as a member of REMA International Ministries Youth Department. Marissa? I asked Marissa Henderson, is also twelve. So that's two twelve-year-olds, I gather, those are twins. Twelve years, she lives in Macon with her family, attends Howard Middle School. She's also in the sixth grade, favorite subject is English. So one likes science, one likes English and language arts. She's been an active member of the Girl Scouts for five years, earned her Bronze Award. She also enjoys art and has recently joined the sixth grade beginner band where she plays the tuba. Congratulations, I think that's fabulous. As a member of the REMA International Ministries Youth Department, Marissa occasionally volunteers and helps her community. You know, in this day and age when you hear so much bad news about young people and this that, isn't it great to have two such wonderful young people come? And we appreciate your being here and leading us in the pledge, and we wish you all the best in your future educational endeavors and in your life. Thank you for being here, and Pastor Cavanaugh, thank you. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes, and we had minutes of the pre-commission meeting of May the, excuse me, March the nineteenth, and our regular commission meeting of March the nineteenth, prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections? If not, can I get a motion by slushing just a second, by when, to approve the minutes? All in favor of approval of the minutes as prepared and issued, signify by saying aye? Those opposed, say no? The ayes have it, and the minutes of the pre-commission meeting and the regular commission meeting are approved. Next, our invited guests, and I'm delighted to present a proclamation to some of our invited guests tonight. And Juanzina, would you please ask anybody that's here with you to celebrate CDBG Week to kind of join you down at the podium and let me come down and present this proclamation?
We have several of our organizations that are recipients of Community Development Block Grant Funds, we'll ask that they come. We have several representatives, so if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and start across the front so we can get a picture. We just have a couple of representatives, just want to make sure we highlight everyone. From Central Georgia Tech, we have Wanda West. From Central Georgia Tech, we also have Marilyn Norfleet, as well as Melody Robinson. From Crisis Line and Safe House, we have Dee Sims, as well as Suzanne Palmer. From Equal Opportunity Council, we have Carlton Williams. From Family Advancement Ministries, we have Gigi Ross. Then from Family Counseling Center, we have Frank Mack and Ed Lacyth. Then from Home First, we have Reginald Bell. From Kings Park, we have Teresa Hugley, Clifford Johnson, and Attila Moss. We have from Loews and Fishes Ministry, Judy Sexton, as well as we have from Macon Volunteer Clinic, Kathy Lloyd. Mentors Project, Tracy Allen, Fuller Center, Taylor Chestnut, and Rebuilding Macon, we have Deborah Rollins. And we have several staff members that are here with us. We have Regina Newsom, who is our program specialist that works with the sub recipients. And then we also have Charlotte Woody, our assistant manager.
And we're delighted that each and every one of you are here. Let me read this proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas since nineteen seventy-five, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development has provided Community Development Block Grant, lovingly known as CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds to communities across the country, allowing them to make tremendous contributions to the viability of housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of the selected communities. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has as its primary objective the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environments, and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has deemed Macon Bibb County as an entitlement community, grantee with the responsibility of carrying out activities dedicated to the revitalization of neighborhoods, economic development, and improving community facilities and services, allowing the Macon Bibb County to receive a direct allocation through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Programs that are funded by this grant must give priority to services that benefit low and moderate income persons. And whereas in program year twenty eighteen, Macon Bibb County has had over six hundred and fifty individuals benefit from the Community Development Block Grant Program funding that was awarded to this area. Services that were instrumental in facilitating the benefits included youth mentoring programs, minor home repair programs, family and individual counseling, crisis intervention, homeless services, and case management, just to name a few. The award amount has fluctuated over the years, Macon Bibb County has been able to maximize each award by identifying programs that address the most urgent needs of our community. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has developed a strong network or relationships among the local government, residents, businesses, and not-for-profit organizations, and through these relationships, Macon Bibb County community is able to grow and thrive while offering all citizens an opportunity to participate in quality programs regardless of income. Now therefore, I Robert A. B. Rickett do hereby proclaim April the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, is National Community Development Week in Macon Bibb County, and I urge this community, Congress, and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally, regionally, and nationally with the Community Development Block Grant Program. In witness whereof, I adherent to set my hand and cause the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed. I'd like to present this to Juanzina, along with my personal appreciation to each and every organization represented here for all the wonderful work. And I know Commissioner Lucas, you join me in saying how much we appreciate each and every organization and what you do for the folks that you deliver services to. So, thank you, let me give, and want the commissioner to join me in a round of applause, not just for CDBG, but for all these organizations. And Commissioner Lucas, would you like to say a word or two?
Thank you. As Chair of the Economic and Community Resources Committee, and there are four others who serve on that committee, we would like to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all of the work that you do in making this community what it is, and the work that you will continue to do to make sure that this community thrives and the least of these will be taken care of. So thank you so very much on behalf of the commissioners and all of the citizens of this community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Pull this back out of the way, don't trip over the cord though. All right.
If you look at your place setting, each one of you have information about each one of the agencies that have, that we are currently highlighting as far as Community Development Block Grant Funds, so please take time out to look at the information as far as those agencies are concerned, and reach out to them if you have any questions or reach out to us. Thank you again for all that you do in supporting Community Development Block Grant Funds and Macon Bibb County's Economic and Community Development Department, thank you.
Next item on our, oopsie, so much for forty-one, or thirteen, oopsie. Next item on our agenda is public comments on agenda items. This is the opportunity that we give to you, ladies and gentlemen, to comment on an item that's on our agenda for action tonight, so that we hear from you before we vote on it. We have one person sign up, Mike Odom, who wants to talk to us about item E and item M on the agenda. Mr. Odom, you'll recognize for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, item E, talking about a eight million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar revenue bond, which Macon Bibb County has a guarant, some participating guarantee in debt service with the Urban Development Authority. Per an open records request on long-term annual liability debt schedules, that was not given to me, so I'm missing some information on that. I don't, it doesn't say what our annual debt service is, what are we asking for early payoff? So there's a tremendous amount of information that I'm missing here as a result of an open records request. So I would ask that that be included as part of my request. Item G, here we are eighty percent through the fiscal year twenty nineteen, we're asking for approval to sign a contract for a lease that began last July first, for a hundred thousand dollars. How did that fall through the cracks? I mean, we're two months away from the end of the year and we're asking to sign a lease that started ten months ago. I mean, I'm not opposing approving it if we need it, but shouldn't we now be moving for a resolution to approve the next fiscal year lease, so that we know we can include it in the FY twenty twenty budget? So my curiosity is, how did we miss ten months that we've been living in a place that we didn't have a lease? And lastly, item M, on the resolution about a fifth member of the Land Bank Authority being a BOE designee, I support that, but more importantly now, I changed what my comments were. I was incredibly embarrassed at the lack of professional conduct in the pre-commission meeting. You can have your opinion, but you don't attack people. You don't accuse people of being dishonest or underhanded or saying you're lying. I heard a lot of people in there recreating reality and history. That may be, that may be working with your district, but it doesn't work. You should be embarrassed the way you conducted yourself forty minutes ago. That is not the way you move forward, that's the way you make enemies. That's the way you make people remember, okay, he or she stabbed me in the back with some unfounded accusations, I'm gonna let it go this time, but, you know, payback, you know, can come. Every one of you up here that was throwing and hurling accusations should be absolutely embarrassed.
Mr. Odom, you're going off topic, please, sir. This is about agenda items?
About agenda item M.
No, sir, you're actually talking about the conduct of commissioners, and that's not what this time is.
I supported it, I supported it. Well, first of all, they were attacking you more than anybody else. Okay, I support it. Your reasons for objecting to it are unfounded, they're emotional, you're trying to rewrite history. I know it was referred back to committee, I'm suspicious of that, the motivation of that committee. I recommend it come before the full committee of the whole and it be voted on again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Odom, I appreciate your comments. Nobody else signed up for agenda item comments, so those of you who signed up to talk about non-agenda items will be recognized later in the meeting. That brings us now to operation, excuse me, to committee, may I approach him? Point of order?
Since I agree with the speaker, what would be the process to untable that, bring it before this entire committee? The item that was tabled, I'd like to untable it, bring it before this entire committee?
I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to, I'm going to.
And then vote it down in here, is that possible?
I'm going, I'm going to defer, I'm going to defer to the county attorney to let him say, but I, I would say at this point, it would take a motion to add an item to the agenda, is what I, I would say it would take, but I'm going to defer to the county attorney.
We would need a motion to suspend the rules and to add the item to the agenda.
Disregard.
Okay. Commissioner Watkins, did you have something that you wanted to ask?
The Operations and Finance Committee met on April ninth, twenty nineteen, and took the following action. The committee approved the following SPOLOX projects. A professional services agreement with BTBB for architectural services in the amount of twenty-seven thousand and nineteen dollars, and a contract with Warren and Associates for two hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for the relocation of municipal court. We allocated one point four million to the Freedom Park line item under SPOLOX projects, and the committee approved the issuing of the refunding of bonds by the Urban Development Authority in the principal amount of eight million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The committee approved transferring from IT repairs and maintenance computer hardware accounts to the repairs and maintenance software licensing and maintenance software license and maintenance account, to covering an account deficit caused by the purchase of an additional Microsoft license. The committee approved the lease agreement with Middle Georgia Regional Commission in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars and eight cents. This concludes the report of operations and finance.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Economic and Community Development, Commissioner Lucas, any report that you want to make?
Yes, sir, just a very brief one, I think. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on April the ninth, twenty nineteen, and we approved the minutes, and we also had an item on there, which was a resolution to amend section four point oh one of that resolution governing the Macon Bibb County Land Bank Authority to provide that the President of the Bibb County Board of Education, or his or her designee, should serve as the fifth member of the Board of Directors of the Macon Bibb County Land Bank Authority. That item, after a lengthy discussion, was tabled by those who are duly elected to vote. It was tabled. The committee discussion centered around the fact that there had not been information from the Board of Education, and there was doubt as to whether the person who was there for the board was empowered to speak on behalf of the board. And there was also no information coming from the Land Bank Authority. For those very valid reasons, this particular item was tabled. There was an attempt today to bring it back, and the item was again tabled and sent back to this committee for action at our next meeting. And that ends our report.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Next, no report from Public Safety. That takes us to Facilities and Engineering Committee, Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir, Facilities and Engineering also met on April the ninth, twenty nineteen, and took the following action. The committee approved the exercise of eminent domain on the following properties. To acquire, to acquire a six hundred and nine square foot right-of-way and a thousand and thirty square foot permanent easement of the property, commonly known as 539 Hazel Street. Number two, to acquire a hundred and thirty-six square foot, more or less, permanent easement on the property, commonly known as 525 Hazel Street. And number three, to acquire a six hundred and ten foot square foot right-of-way and a thousand and thirty square foot permanent easement of the property, commonly known as 539 Hazel Street. And that completes the report, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. These are alcohol beverage license applications that have been submitted to us, and each application is accompanied by all of the requisite paperwork that includes the sheriff's certificate of a successful background check for the applicant, the certification from Business Development Services that the appropriate fees have been paid for the beverage license sought. Planning and zoning is issued, a certificate of compliance with zoning regulations, and the county engineer has certified that the location meets all of the distant separation requirements required by law, and there's also a copy of the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph in each case. So each of these six applications is accompanied by all of that documentation. The first is an application by Pinona Food Mart Incorporated, located at forty-three thirty-one Pinona Avenue, and that is for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. Secondly, there is WMK Gas Mart Incorporated, doing business as Chang's, located at eight-eighty-five Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. That also is for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. The third is the Crab Hut, it's actually Macon Crab House LLC, doing business as the Crab Hut, located at forty-six ninety Presidential Parkway. That is for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premises at that location. Item D is a corporation of Mercer University, doing business at the Grand Opera House, located at six fifty-one Mulberry Street. That is for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine to be served, consumed on the premises at that location. That is the Grand Opera House on Mulberry Street. Next is a new alcoholic beverage license for Macon Prime LLC, doing business as Marathon Food Mart, located at forty-five oh five Broadway. That's for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. And finally, you have a KSC Easteries LLC, doing business as Kudzu Seafood Company, their new location, five twelve Poplar Street, and that's for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine to be consumed on the premises at that location. The committee of the whole recommends approval and issuance of these licenses as requested. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, oh, Commissioner Wen, did you have anything on this?
Just for point of information for people, because I asked the question, why were we approving a license at the Grand Opera House when they were already selling alcohol? Would you explain that? Because I want, when people watch this program, I want them to know why. And secondly, the one about Kudzu, they already have a license too, but they're moving, so they have to have a new license. I just want people to know what we're doing.
That's fine. We, Macon Bibb County leases the Grand Opera House to Mercer University. Mercer University has been contracting with an outside vendor to bring in beer, wine, and liquor mixed drinks, served in the ante rooms, the little gathering areas outside the theater. Now they're bringing that in-house and their own caterer in-house, and therefore they're required to get the license now, so they're asking for the license in their name, Mercer University, so they can continue to do the same thing at the same location. The other one, as you've already stated, Kudzu Seafood is moving diagonally across the intersection from the current location on Third Street to the new location on five twelve Poplar Street, but they have to apply for a new license at the new location, and that's what this is. Is there further discussion? Got a question, Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, at the Grand Opera House, is, because of the, this particular license, who carries the insurance on, on the, are we carrying it since it's our, it's our building? Do we insure it, even though it's leased to someone?
I should say, I don't know. My assumption is that Macon Bibb County would have insurance on the building itself for fire or damage or that kind of thing, but that the tenant would have to have liability insurance.
That was, that was gonna be my next question.
Right, I can't, I can't say, I can't guarantee you that, but that, that would be my, and we'd be glad to look that up.
Can we check that to make sure that we're providing the appropriate insurance, but the, the tenant is also providing?
I, I should say, I don't know. My, my assumption is that Macon-Bibb County would have insurance on the building itself for fire or damage or that kind of thing, but that the, the tenant would have to have liability insurance.
That was, that was gonna be my next question.
Right, I, I, I can't, I can't say, I can't guarantee you that, but that, that would be my, and we'd be glad to look that up.
Can we check that to make sure that we're providing the appropriate insurance? But the, uh.
The tenant.
The tenant is also providing, uh.
We'll look that up.
Yeah, and does the alcohol license bring, carry with it any additional, um, the requirement for additional protection, uh, against lawsuits or anything?
I don't know, I don't know that it does or it doesn't. The, the alcohol license may require that you carry insurance in a certain, certain amount, but I, I don't.
Okay, I was, I was just curious.
We'll, we'll look that up too. Is there further, further discussion, further question? Commissioner Wen, is your light on again? Okay, Commissioner Wen? Yes ma'am?
Tenant or a person that's going to serve the alcohol, this is just based on my experience, has to buy the license for that and the insurance. So I think both will be covered by that tenant. I mean, to further clarify, but just from the background I have, I believe that's the case.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuing the ordinance, uh, the, the licenses as requested, signify by saying aye? Those opposed, say no? The ayes have it, and those licenses will be issued as requested. Uh, that, uh, takes us then, uh, from the consent agenda to the first item of old business, uh, under Section nine, uh, nine A. Uh, and this is an ordinance to allow the district attorney to, uh, participate in, in this retirement program to the extent of supplemental benefits received. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend dependence one of the Charter of Macon-Bibb County relating to the Macon-Bibb County Pension Plan pursuant to the authority granted in Macon-Bibb County under the Georgia Public Retirement System standard and Article nine, Section two, Paragraph one of the Constitution of the State of Georgia, so as to allow the district attorney for the Macon Judicial Circuit to receive supplemental retirement benefits under the plan and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, I just wanna, um, uh, be reminded of the amount, this is what, thirty-four thousand? Is that what the amount ended up being?
I, I'm having brain lapse, I, 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 it seems to me like that the supplement is something to the extent of thirty-seven, thirty-nine thousand dollars currently. But the retirement benefit is that they get two-thirds of the amount of the supplement. So that, when they retire, after the requisite number of years of service, they would get two, two-thirds of the, the amount of the supplement that paid by Macon-Bibb.
Yeah, I thought the figure that I heard was thirty-four thousand. I just wanted to, uh, make mention of the fact that, whereas I'm gonna vote to support this, um, cause it's allowed, and I think that we're gonna get a request from the solicitor, cause I think that's the only one left that has not taken advantage of that additional, uh. Uh, I don't blame people for it, they do a lot of work, and they, uh, they are due a decent retirement. However, I want us to keep in mind as we go into budget that, uh, our lowest-paid employee makes twenty-three thousand dollars, which is less than what we're adding on as, uh, partial retirement for another position. I know they're different, but I just want us to keep that in mind.
Yeah, we, we can confirm, yeah, right, salary and, and benefits, I, we can certainly confirm that.
My, my point is, we need to do something, i- i- we need to do something for our lowest-paid employees.
Okay. Thank you Commissioner Lucas, uh, Commissioner Allen, got your light on as well, sir?
Sir, when I presented this resolution, it was because we ended up having three people when I came down that were left out. And two of the three have been now properly channeled, if this passes, two of the three will. And there would be one left, and I've not heard anything that that individual is going to be, uh, pursuing this. But I feel sure possibly if they knew that was gonna happen, that it was there, that they would pursue it. And I would support that also, thank you mayor.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Jones, got your light on, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the, you know, we've opened this can of worms, in my view, we never should have opened. But you're gonna have more than after s- the solicitors, this is, they already have a supplement from the state. I don't think it's our role as a government, especially this government, who's scratching for dollars as much as we are to, to fund the rest of their retirement. How you?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem, got your light on, sir?
We spoke with the solicitor, and, uh, she said she would not be asking us for anything that she's already covered by the state. So, uh, so, uh, just want y'all to know that.
Good, thank, thank you Mayor Protem. Uh, this says one waiting, but yet I don't have a, a light on, okay? Uh, so no further, no further discussion, uh, all in favor of the ordinance, uh, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? Got one, one no, uh, so it passed, the ayes have it, uh, eight, eight to one, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is a, uh, resolution to ratify a professional services agreement with Britton Thompson Bray and Brown in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nineteen dollars for architectural services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to ratify the execution of a professional services agreement between Macon-Bibb County and BTBB Incorporated in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nineteen dollars for architectural services related to the relocation of the municipal court to be paid by Splotz bond proceeds and/or Splotz revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, Item C is a, a resolution to, uh, execute a contract with Warren Associates in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty dollars for, um, the municipal court, uh, relocation of the municipal court into the courthouse. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between Macon-Bibb County and Warren Associates Incorporated in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the relocation of the municipal court to be paid by Splotz bond proceeds and/or Splotz revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is an ordinance to appropriate a million-four-hundred-and-eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty dollars of Splotz, uh, proceeds, uh, for Freedom Park. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of one million four-hundred-and-eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty dollars from Splotz bond proceeds and/or Splotz revenues from two thousand and nineteen Park and Recreation Freedom Park Line item as shown on the two thousand and eighteen Splotz Project Timeline and Budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, uh, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is a resolution, uh, requesting the Urban Development Authority to issue refinancing or refunding bonds in the amount of eight million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission, the governing body of Macon-Bibb County, requesting that the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority issue its refunding revenue bond in the principal amount of eight million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of achieving debt service savings on its outstanding revenue bonds. Series two-oh-oh-seven issued for the benefit of the city of Macon and to reduce the payments otherwise due from the county under the intergovernmental contract which secures the payment of said revenue bonds. To authorize the negotiation of a new intergovernmental contract to be entered into between the county and the authority to provide security for the series two thousand and nineteen bond, to designate various firms and professionals to work and assist the county with the issuance of the series two thousand and nineteen bond and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Wen?
As I, as I said earlier about another issue, the pu- public looks at this and listens to it and wants to know what we're doing. And you mentioned just briefly that this is like financing your debt. It's like re- refinancing your mortgage, just for a point of information. So we're gonna be saving on our debt by doing this, I want people to know that's what this is for.
Well, well, well stated, yeah, with this, this is refinancing at a lower interest rate, saves us, saves us money. Roll call? Did you say what you said? Okay. Uh, uh, got a request for a roll, roll call vote, uh, uh, ma'am? Uh, no, I, you're entitled, you're entitled, you're entitled to do that. So roll, roll call vote, uh, we'll, we'll start with, with Commissioner Wen, Commissioner Wen, how do you vote? Commissioner Wen votes yes, uh, Commissioner Schlesinger? Votes yes, Commissioner Lucas? Votes yes, Commissioner Jones? Votes yes, Commissioner Bibbins? Votes yes, Commissioner Allen? Votes yes, Commissioner Shep? Votes yes, Commissioner, uh, Watkins? Votes yes, Mayor Protem? Votes yes, unanimous, uh, 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 nine, nine yes votes, resolution is adopted. Uh, now that takes us to Item F, which is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment, uh, for information technology to move money from the hardware line to the software line. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars from Information Technology Repairs and Maintenance Computer Hardware Account to Repairs and Maintenance Software License and Maintenance Account to cover the account deficit caused by the purchase of additional Microsoft licenses and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is a resolution for a lease agreement, uh, at the, um, Emory Highway Office for the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission for the lease of office space located at one-seven-five dash C, Emory Highway, for the annual lease amount of one-hundred thousand, eight dot, eight cents. Right, makes sense, for one-year period from July the first, two thousand and eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, in substantially the same form as attached here too, as Exhibit A and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, uh, Commissioner Wen, got your light on again?
Again, just, just for clarification of why this thing is being done at this time, so I think we need to let the public know what happened.
I, I really think, and I'm sorry that the attorney stepped out, but I really think it's, uh, under the premise of better late than never. We've been operating under a, kind of an understanding that this is a continuing year, year-to-year lease, but I think somebody had said it would be nice to have that documented and confirmed. So, under the theory, better late than never, here, here, here we are. But it's been, it's been an agreement, they've been there for years, and, and far as I know, are gonna be there for years. Right. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Oh, I'm so sorry, did I, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones?
Uh, and I understand we have this, uh, agreement, and we trust them, and they trust us, but business dictates you have a written agreement in a timely manner, as in the start of the, the lease. I think you'd agree with that, thank you.
We, we'll do better, we, we'll, we'll, we'll be sure this one heads up the li- list for the next fiscal, fiscal year. Uh, it do, it does take us a little time, now, I, I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses for anybody. But when, when we pass a budget that becomes effective on, on July the first, then you've got a lot of contracts, uh, with a lot of different agencies and organizations that have to be approved, and it's for the fiscal year. But we stretch that a little bit to be nine months late, late this time. Thirty, sixty, ninety days probably is about par for the course, I would think, for all of the contracts, cause there are a lot of them. But we, 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 you, your point's well taken, you, you need an, you need an agreement timely executed, I wouldn't, I wouldn't differ with that. Uh, i- i- if, y'all got me so confused now, I, I don't even know if we voted, have we voted yet?
Uh, no, sir.
No, okay, with no further discussion, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, we've got three companion, uh, uh, resolutions about using the power of eminent domain and not to be taken lightly, uh, to exercise, uh, or to, to acquire property necessary for either temporary and/or a permanent easements to facilitate the construction of the bridge over the railroad tracks at five-forty-eight Hazel Street, five-twenty-five Hazel Street, and five-thirty-nine Hazel Street. May I ask the clerk to read all three of those together, and we take one vote? Does anybody want, want them voted on separately? He- hearing none, then I'll ask the clerk to read three, three in a row.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire four-hundred-and-sixty-nine point five-nine square feet, more or less, temporary easement of the property commonly known as five-forty-eight Hazel Street, located in Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and shown as Parcel fourteen on the right-of-way survey plat of Hazel Street and for other lawful purposes. Number two, a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire a hundred-and-thirty-six point five-four square feet, more or less, permanent easement on the property commonly known as five-two-five Hazel Street, located in Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and shown as Parcel sixteen on the right-of-way survey plat of Hazel Street and for other lawful purposes. And the final one, a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire a six-hundred-and-nine point seven-eight square feet right-of-way and a one-thousand-and-thirty point seven-nine square feet permanent easement on the property commonly known as five-thirty-nine Hazel Street, located in Macon-Bibb County, Georgia, and shown as Parcel thirteen on the right-of-way survey plat of Hazel Street and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval of Item H, Item I, and Item J that have just been read, uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of those three items, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, those three, uh, uh, items are approved, resolutions are approved. That takes us, uh, now to Item K, uh, which is, uh, uh, about, uh, an ordinance, uh, to provide for the hiring, uh, or contracting for the position of chief building official, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend Chapter six, Article one, Section six dash one, Subsection A of the Code of Ordinances of Macon-Bibb County to allow the contracting of the position of chief building and official and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? He- hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. And finally, a res- a resolution, uh, regarding the, uh, enforcement of, uh, Georgia State Minimum Standard Codes, uh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission amending the Department of Business and Development Services Administrative Procedures for the enforcement of the Georgia State Minimum Standard Codes and for other lawful purposes.
And this is essentially to say that the contract employee can enforce those same codes, is what this is. Uh, the, the committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? The, the ayes have it. Um, Item M failed to be moved forward by the, the, uh, during the pre-commission by the committee of the whole, so it is not on this agenda, and it has been removed. Uh, it is now pending again in the, um, Economic and Community Development Committee for further action. Um, Item ten is new business, and we have a number of items of new business to read, uh, tonight. Um, and they are Item A, a resolution of the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Macon-Bibb County and the Department of Family and Children's Services providing for a joint collaboration of providing jobs and skills training to youth through the Georgia Teen Week Internship Program. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development, uh, Committee. And Item B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Jamie Kaplan in an amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars for tennis consulting services. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item C is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement with River Edge Behavioral Health Center in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year for office space at one-seventy-five, uh, Emory Highway. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance, uh, Committee. Uh, Item D is an ordinance, uh, to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to various accounts in the Macon-Bibb County EMA for flood damage in the EOC. I'm gonna refer that. EMA for flood damage in the EOC. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item E is a resolution to approve the twentieth amendment to the twenty-eighteen SPOSS project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOSS project manager. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item F is a resolution to name the intersection of Knoxville Road and Bethel Church Road after PFC. I think that stands for Private First Class James Roy Newberry, POW MIA, to provide for the installation of a suitable memorial. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item G is a resolution approving a request for the installation of a streetlight at the intersection of Chambers Road and Brookhaven Road pursuant to Article ten of Chapter twenty-nine of the Code to be paid for from the Facilities Management Budget Services to Government Electricity Line Item. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item H is a similar resolution approving a request for the installation of a streetlight at fifty-nine forty...
Clayton's?
Clayton's.
Clayton's?
T and Y is reversed.
It's Miss Bill.
Oh, Clayton's, okay. Clayton's Circle pursuant to Article ten, Chapter twenty-nine of the Code to be paid for Facilities Management Budget Services to Government Electricity Line Item. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item I is a resolution to install eleven streetlights on Napier Avenue and Patterson Street pursuant to Article ten, Chapter twenty-nine of the Code to be paid for Facilities Management Budget Services to Government Electricity Line Item. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item J is an ordinance to amend Chapter four of the Code to prohibit cinnamons from obtaining or renewing alcoholic beverage licenses. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item K is a resolution approving a request for the installation of three streetlights on Fulton Mill Road pursuant to Article ten, Chapter twenty-nine of the Code to be paid for by the Facilities Management Budget Services to Government Electricity Line Item. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. And finally, item L is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a bridge paint maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation related to the painting and maintenance of the bridge on Stadium Drive at I seventy-five and a memorandum of understanding with the Corporation of Mercy University to facilitate a public-private partnership related to the agreement of Mercy University to provide all the funds and services necessary for compliance with the Georgia Department of Transportation Bridge Paint Maintenance Agreement. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. That's all of the new business items that have come down from the county attorney's office at this point, but there may be more during the rest of this week. The clerk will publish an agenda on Friday afternoon, and I would refer you to the agenda that's published on Friday afternoon for all of the items of new business that will be discussed at committee meetings in the committee meeting room behind us beginning next Monday, excuse me, next Tuesday at nine o'clock a.m. That would be the April the twenty-third at nine o'clock a.m. in the committee meeting room for all that new business. That brings us now to public comments on non-agenda items, and there's several people here that have been waiting patiently for their opportunity to discuss non-agenda items with us. Is this a point of...
Mr. Mayor, I was actually trying to move that we are, since we have finished this evening with the people's business, that we adjourn the meeting in wake of a scheduled event that has our name on it, that started at five o'clock by the chamber that we all were supposed to be at, that the chamber chose to have on the night of our meeting. If this body does not choose to, then I always wait at the end of the meeting to address it as a point of personal comments.
We're not quite through with our agenda, but do you wish to make a motion to adjourn before we end the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll go forward. We've got two people that want to talk to us about non-agenda. Ron Rosier, Ronald Rosier, Mr. Rosier wants to talk to us about...
It's trash cans and trash.
Oh, trash removal, thank you. You're recognized for up to five minutes. Don't feel obligated to take it all, but you're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Okay, I've been in Macon for about fifty-something years. The house that I'm living in, I've been there about fifty-two years, and now it's getting to be a problem with the trash cans lined up down the street where I talked to the inspector several times to remove the trash cans. He sent a letter out and he attached it to the cans. This has been going on about a year or so now. After that, I hear nothing else from him. I've sent letters, I've went down there, I've talked to him. The only thing I ever received in the mail was I owe my taxes, which I paid the taxes, but the cans are beginning to be a hassle. Cars can't get up and down the street, and they're not putting the trash in the cans. They're throwing it on the ground now. And I went over this with the commissioner several times, and he won't even return a phone call.
We'll look into this, and I'm sorry you're having the problem, but we'll look into it and see if we can't do something about either a different place to put the cans or require people to put...
In front of their door.
Right.
But they don't put them in front of the door. They bring them all down in front of my door, and it smells.
Yeah, I'm sure. We'll look into this, and sorry you're having the problem. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you for your patience here tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We appreciate it. Finally, Mr. Richardson, don't feel obligated to take your full five minutes, sir, but you recognize up to five minutes to share some grassroots reflections with us.
The Book of Judges, Chapter Seven. Then Jeroel Baal, who was Gideon and all the people that were with him, rose up early and pitched beside the well of Harroth, so that the host of the Midianites were on the north side of them by the hill of Moriah in the valley. And the Lord said unto Gideon, "The people that are with thee are too many for me to give the Midianites into their hands lest Israel vaunt themselves against me, saying my own hand to save me. Now therefore go to proclaim in the ears of the people, saying, 'Whose settler is fearful and afraid? Let him return depart early from Mount Gilid.' And there returned the people twenty and two thousand, and there remained ten thousand." And the Lord said unto Gideon, "The people are yet too many. Bring them down to the water, and I will try them for thee there. And it shall be that of whom I say unto thee, 'This shall go with thee; the same shall go with thee.' And of whomsoever I say unto thee, 'This shall not go with thee; the same shall not go.'" So he brought down the people unto the water, and the Lord said unto Gideon, "Everyone that laugheth at the water with his tongue as a dog laugheth; him shalt thou set by himself. Likewise everyone that bows down upon his knees to drink." And the number of them that laughed, putting their hand to their mouth, were three hundred men, but all the rest of the people bowed down upon their knees to drink water. And the Lord said unto Gideon, "By the three hundred men that laughed, will I save you, and deliver the Midianites into thine hand, and let all the other people go, every man, unto his place." So the people took the victuals in their hand and their trumpets, and he sent all the rest of Israel, every man, unto his tent, and retained those three hundred men, and the host of Midian was beneath him in the valley. And it came to pass the same night that the Lord said unto him, "Arise, get thee down unto the host, for I have delivered it into thy hand. But if thou fear to go down, and go thou with Pariah, thy servant, down to the host, and thou should hear what they say, and afterward shall thy hands be strengthened to go down unto the host." Then went he down with Pariah, his servant, unto the outside of the armed men that were in the host. And the Midianites and the Malachites and all the children of the east lay along in the valley like grasshoppers for multitude, and their camels were without number as the sand by the seaside for multitude. And when Gideon was come, behold, there was a man that told a dream unto his fellow, and said, "Behold, I dreamed a dream, a lower cake of barley-bread tumbled into the host of Midian, and came unto a tent, and smolt it, that it fell and overturned it, and that the tent lay along." And his fellow answered and said, "This is nothing else save the sword of Gideon, the son of Joash, a man of Israel; for into his hand hath God delivered Midian and all the hosts." And it was so when Gideon heard the telling of the dream and the interpretation thereof, that he worshiped and returned into the host of Israel, and said, "Arise, for the Lord hath delivered into your hand the host of Midian." And he divided the three hundred men into three companies, and he put a trumpet at every man's hand with the empty pitchers and lamps within the pitchers. And he said unto them, "Look on me, and do likewise. And behold, when I come to the outside of the camp, it shall be that as I do, so shall ye do. And when I blow the trumpet, I and all that are with me, then blow ye the trumpets also on every side of all the camp, and say, 'The sword of the Lord and the Gideon.'" So Gideon and the hundred men that were with him came unto the outside of the camp in the beginning of the middle watch, and they had but newly set the watch, and they blew the trumpets and break the pitchers that were in their hands. And the three companies blew the trumpets and break the pitchers, and held the lamps in their left hands and the trumpets in their right hands to blow withall. And they cried, "The sword of the Lord and the Gideon!" And they stood every man in his place round about the camp, and all the hosts ran and cried and fled. And the three hundred blew the trumpets, and the Lord said every man soared against his fellow, even throughout all the host. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your patience. I've got a couple of points of personal privilege. It would appear, Commissioner Lucas, is this...
Yes, sir.
You have a point of personal privilege?
Yeah, I would like to ask my fellow commissioners and others in the community to put on their calendars April twenty-four, five-thirty, the Georgia Sports Hall of Fame. This will be the thirteenth annual Al Lucas Memorial Scholarship, and that scholarship is named in honor of our late son Al, who died as a result of injuries he received in two thousand and five in a football game. He loved the community, and we have been able to offer deserving scholar athletes over the years assistance in going to college, and some, most are very, very successful, and many have graduated and gone on in their careers, but we'd like to invite everyone to meet us. Charles Richardson will be the speaker, and the Central High School Chorus will perform for the event. It starts at five-thirty, Georgia Sports Hall of Fame. You're invited. Thank you.
On Thursday, the twenty-fifth?
Thursday, no, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, I'm sorry. Okay, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, five-thirty at the Sports Hall of Fame?
Right.
Good, thank you very much. Commissioner Lucas, May Protem, got your light on, point of personal privilege, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I received a call today asking for confirmation as to the number of commissioners that would be attending the event tonight. The event is called Macon Matters Social. This takes the place of the annual Taste of Macon event that we all attend usually during February in Atlanta, and they changed it and changed the name, and the event is at Walnut Creek, which started at five o'clock. Eight o'clock has our logo on it along with several others, and I was actually talking, won't call names, somebody over at the chamber, and they said, "Well, what happened?" And I said, "Well, I don't know. What normally happens is you leave second and fourth, Tuesday of the month, where we would leave at three o'clock going to Atlanta." So as people, and I sent it to commissioners this evening just to let them see the flyer, because this is the first time I've ever seen it. Thank Commissioner Watkins, say he'd never heard of it until now. And so whatever happened, because I'm sure if they sent it to us, we would have gotten it. So people will ask y'all about this event that the local delegation is supposedly have chosen the date. Even speaking to one of our fellow commissioners, she said her, "Well, just, y'all will hear about it. People will ask you where you were for, you know, for us supposed to be there." So that's why I was trying to say, at least, we had an hour to try to get there. But just wanted to share that and to say that I think it's, to me, I think it's just, you know, if the chamber wants our support, they have to do a better job of including us in something that clearly we participated in in many years in the past.
Right. Just as a point of explanation, the chamber did contact me late last year, I would say November, December timeframe, and indicated that they were giving serious consideration to not doing the Taste of Macon in Atlanta because of the cost and the attendance and this, that, or the other, but instead coming up with a local event. And they asked me whether or not I would allow our pledge to support the new event rather than be constrained to the old Taste of Macon. I gave my approval to let them use the money for the new event rather than to take it back and not use it for the Taste of Macon, but I did not know that the date, they picked the date and announced the date. I called them and said that that was a commission meeting night and that we couldn't change the meeting night, and they'd already committed and made arrangements with Brother Stewart and so on and so on and so forth. So that's kind of how it played out that we did...
We don't get, we're not going to get a refund?
Nope, not going to, not going to, not going to do a refund. Mr. Schlesinger, I got your light on as well. Now, do you have a point of personal privilege, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind the commissioners and those who are tuning into this broadcast that the National Day of Prayer is going to be Thursday, May the second, six forty-five, at the First Presbyterian Church here in downtown Macon. Also, that we'll have an observance, a midday observance, twelve o'clock noon here at the Governance Center. Again, that's Thursday, May the second.
And that's six forty-five a.m.?
A.m., yes, correct.
You better get up early to get your breakfast, and then in the midday as well. Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Any other points of personal privilege? There are none. We have reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Without objection, we are adjourned.